Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, March 13th. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sergeant. All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, thank you all for joining us. We're glad to have you here. And as always, we'll start our meeting today with the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Stevenson.
Thank you. I have two topics tonight that I want to make sure the Board has the most recent information. One is our student walkouts issue, and the other is open enrollment. So let me start with open enrollment. Since we're in the open enrollment period, and as you know, we had sent you a memo around doing a pilot with swapping seats at the high school level district-wide in order to meet the school choice for high school students. We feel like that process has maximized the number of student requests to enroll at their school of choice. We continue to extend open enrollment offers and review seat availability daily. In addition, we are committed to trying to meet community open enrollment demand while still balancing capacity needs. And I think two of our great capacity issues are at Fairview and Boulder, balancing the populations and ensuring that the schools are handling the number of students who are attending there. We continue to speak with parents regarding questions they may have about this process, and I encourage individuals who have additional questions or concerns to reach out directly to my staff. I know that they've talked with several parents on the phone, they're meeting with several parents, and there is a little bit of a misperception that because we did a swap of students, we reduced the number of open seats, we really didn't, because that was a one-to-one exchange. So we ended up with the same number of openings for other students in the system. However, we certainly understand parents are interested in getting their children in the school they choose, and we're working with them to try and accommodate the most number of children that we can. Second thing we wanted to talk with you about a bit is the walkout. As you know, this is a national agenda item, the student walkout tomorrow morning. Students are slated to walk out of school for 17 minutes and then go back to school. We have talked with our principals, and our objective in this is not that we have an opinion on the walkout. We believe our students are organized, and we believe our students will be walking out. And I met with a group of students Friday morning, and they were all high school students, and I would tell you, they were quite eloquent about their thinking, whether they were walking out or whether they weren't, why they were thinking that way. So I want to be really clear that our objective in this is, are we encouraging students to think and make good decisions? Our second objective is to make sure our students aren't safe. So I feel like I've responded to about 10,000 emails, I'm sure it hasn't been 10,000, it just feels that way. And I would say that we are probably, as a community, in a 60/40 split. 60% of the parents are sending me emails saying, "Thank you for informing us, and thank you for supporting our students, and we support our kids making thoughtful decisions." I would say about 40% are very upset and think we should be stopping students from walking out, that we should not allow it. What I have to tell you is that when you're dealing with high school students, it's very different than dealing with 4th and 5th graders. And I think if we said, "We're going to try and stop them from walking out," we would end up with conflicts that aren't necessary. Instead, we will have kids supervised outside the building, we will have kids supervised inside the building, and what we really want is for our students to be making rational, thoughtful decisions about what they're doing. So this is a national issue. The other thing, I got a question today saying, "Who is Boulder Valley consulting with as you organize the walkouts?" I can assure you that we are not organizing walkouts, we are not consulting with any particular political group, we are working with our students and really trying to support them in their decision-making and in their safety. That's what our objectives are. So I wanted you to be aware, because you might also be getting questions. Again, I think I've responded to about 10,000 emails, so I do respond to all of them.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Stevenson? Okay, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is public participation. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. We do have a number of people, so we will be sticking to the two-minute rule this evening. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two minutes starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the Board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. Okay, so we're going to start with agenda items. And our first speaker is Carla Reitz. I'm sorry if I mispronounced.
You pronounced it perfectly. In August of 2013, Fairview High School, where I teach, had an active shooter drill. After a brief meeting, faculty and staff were sent to their classrooms. Hearts, within a few moments, sounds of gunfire echoed through the building. Hearts were pounding as teachers locked doors and hid in the corners of their classrooms. It was terrifying, even though everyone knew it was a drill. More terrifying still was the fact that no one in the building, not our administrators, not our school resource officer, not our security personnel, no one had any way of telling where those shots were coming from, where the shooter was located. The shots echoed, making it impossible to determine where the sounds were coming from. We need to address this issue by installing indoor security cameras in BVSD high schools. There is money in the budget for this, and it is one-time money, so that no other educational programs would be impacted. Now, I understand that some Board members may have concerns regarding privacy. We need to remember that our schools, especially our high schools, are already full of cameras which are in constant use on our students' phones. I also understand that school board members may also worry that security cameras could lead to unfair treatment of students of color, and this is a valid concern. But I have been a part of this school district for most of my life, first as a student and then as a teacher for the past 20 years. And one thing that I know is that BVSD is committed to upholding equity. We don't just pay lip service to it, we take action to make sure that everyone at our schools is treated fairly. And I am confident that this commitment to equity is strong enough that we can protect our students of color from any potential discrimination. Therefore, I highly recommend that we install these security cameras, because it would save lives.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Chang.
Hi, good evening, guys. Today, I want to just briefly mention, and also for the record, I did meet with interim Superintendent Cynthia Dr. Stevenson in regards to this matter. And so basically, throughout the process of this whole interview process and selection process for the Bear Creek Principal position, okay? And because I was familiar with a couple of the candidates, and I'm familiar that the fact that they are extremely qualified for the position, more than the person that was selected for the position or going to be approved for the position today. And because of that, I looked into the whole process of, one, did the principal insight survey actually screen out candidates who are more qualified than the candidate that's going to get approved for the appointment, okay? Two, I looked into the fact that, and I'll just, questions, red flags. Why did BVSD HR decide to lessen the job posting period, the opening period, right, from the standard one month, from the two weeks? Why do they do that, right? They limited it to two weeks only, make it shorter, rather than the whole one month, so that we could get more applicants involved, right? And then, three, why do they, again, lessen the job experience requirements from the standard five years for the principal position, right? Instead, they lessen it into three-years requirements. Why would they do that? And then, especially for a blue-ribbon school, right, such as Bear Creek, okay? So anyhow, my bottom line is, because of these questions, and I do appreciate what Dr. Stevenson's already have gone through with me in the meeting, but the bottom line is, my question to you guys, and my request to you guys, is to postpone, postpone the specific appointment of this principal position, and to allow us more time, so for example, allow the person in question to come over to meet with them and to decide whether or not there is something wrong or some flaws in the process.
Okay, thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Diana Fields.
Hi, my name is Diana Fields, and it's actually with an S. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed changes to the school video camera policies as well. And I'm urging you to amend the policy as drafted and submitted on your agenda. And I want to bring up two points. Number one, I'm a parent of a high school student, I'm a lawyer in Boulder, and I'm also a member of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. In my capacity as the CBOC member, I'm a parent representative at the high school. And for the last two years, the principal in our high school at Fairview has requested interior security cameras. I brought it up to CBOC, and I was told by prior administration that you were unable to do interior security cameras because of a memorandum of understanding with the ACLU. I did an Open Records Request Act, and I got a copy of the letter from the ACLU, and it is not a memorandum of understanding. It was a letter dated in 2001 that talked about best practices for what to do when you implement security cameras. So those are best practices for a policy regarding exterior cameras. Your current Board policy reflects all of the concerns that were brought up by the ACLU. So those concerns have been taken into account. And I also want to remind the Board that that was a letter that was drafted over 17 years ago, and as we know, schools have changed. The second reason I think that the Board ought to consider this is, as you all know, that in July of 2017, the Clara Davis Act was passed, and I heard on the news recently that there's some speculation that that will, it allows for limited immunity, a waiver of immunity for governmental immunity. So it allow a victim of a school shooting or violence to sue a school district if it doesn't take reasonable steps to protect the safety and security of the students. So I think you need to take that into consideration in adopting the policies, as the principals in the middle and high school have unanimously requested. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Reardon.
I'm here to ask the Board to, it's fast, to consider carefully the proposed changes to the policy on the video surveillance. In particular, the policy as written, the proposed policy is confusingly written, vague, and could be damaging to the learning environment for our students. The policy only states that video cameras may be installed, video signal may be recorded, and that the video, that recorded video may be reviewed at a later time. At no point does the policy state that the video signal can be monitored in real-time for any of the uses, for security, real-time security. It has a vague mention of where monitors can be placed, but allows no provision for real-time monitoring. It doesn't say how the process of requests for reviewing that video later can be made, and who is allowed to make those requests from law enforcement, unless the vague section or the broad section on viewing requests applies to all such reviews. The policy also states that camera installation is based on budget and need, citing only ongoing vandalism as theft as the two concrete examples of need for such a video installation, along with another, if security for certain reasons is a key need, that should be called out in the policy. And it also doesn't state how that need is to be evaluated, by whom, and who makes that decision, as it should be in the policy. Of course, school security is of paramount importance, and we do need to protect our children. If the goal is to provide real-time monitoring during an active threat to the school, the policy could be written to allow such a use of a video system without making it a broad, overreaching policy that allows any use of video monitoring throughout the school hallways, classrooms, as the current proposed policy does. And finally, I think while there may be no discrimination intended in this policy, many of our students are going through a turbulent time, they feel threatened by the government, they feel policies are, the government is ever more watching them, and having that intrude into the school, I think will be damaging to our students and their feeling of trust with the school.
Thank you. Okay, moving to non-agenda items, we'll start with Anna Segura. And I hope I got the pronunciation right.
Hello, my name is Anna Segura. I'm a mother to two Crestview Elementary School students, and I'm concerned about profanity, sexual, and violent content currently available on BVSD Network in elementary schools. BVSD policy states that the district shall take reasonable steps to protect students from accessing material and information that is obscene, child pornography, and otherwise harmful to minors as defined by the Board. Web and email filtering software that blocks or filters materials and information shall be installed in the district's data center. However, while in class, my 4th grade son has accessed the following content: how to make recreational drugs, songs with profanity and racial slurs, sites with chats and friendlists, obscene Spanish-language images and videos, as well as gaming sites with seduction, romance, kissing, killing, suicide, mutilation, first-person shooter, and vehicular homicide. These sites were brought to my attention by my son, not by the teachers who are supervising the students' work, and have been confirmed by Principal Davis and Mr. Moore. BVSD is not compliant with its current policy outlined in Student Use of Internet and Electronic Communications. BVSD should blacklist all games and whitelist educational games requested by teachers, as well invest in new, effective filtering technology. Mr. Moore says BVSD policies set by the Board and the Superintendent prevents him from blocking gaming sites, and he's powerless to change it. He also said new software is cross-prohibitive at $6 per student. He will block specific URLs that students and teachers, I mean, teachers and principals submit. However, blocking sites on a one-by-one basis is inefficient and ineffective. Members of the DTAC deny there's even a problem. As an elementary school parent, I do not want my children exposed to profanity, violence, sexual content at schools. This content is not available in print form in the library, why is it available online? I request that the Board approve Mr. Moore to block all gaming sites and convene a competent committee to identify specific steps to regulate inappropriate content on the BVSD network, including investments in new, more effective web filtering software systems. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Debbie Kushman.
I'm Debbie, I'm a member of the Boulder Valley Safe Schools Coalition. If you're not familiar with who we are, I'll tell you quickly, we are a volunteer group of invested community members. We're working to make Boulder Valley schools safe and welcoming for all lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual, and questioning students, staff, and parents. And we've been operating the Boulder Valley School District since 1998. First, I'd like to commend and thank the Board for your ongoing commitment to enacting monumental policies and practices that have gained national attention. These actions have included teaching institutes and trainings for staff, youth leader institutes, expansions of our gay-straight alliances and ally clubs, and formalized gender support plans and policies for supporting students who are transgender. As a parent of a student who falls under these auspices, I'd like to thank you all personally for helping shape and share our journey. We have felt heard and supported throughout our whole process in this community and in this school district, and thank you for being an ally. I am here today to ask you, though, to continue that good work. The Boulder Valley Safe Schools Coalition has a couple things we'd like to ask of you to please keep these values and successes in mind while we search for a new superintendent. We would support a candidate who prioritizes this important work and who has a vision to implement widespread and consistent policy implementation. As a Board, we'd also like you to continue to examine the gap between policy and practice. While we have had many successes, there are still some schools who do not even provide the basic right for safe bathrooms and changing facilities for all their students. And unfortunately, the Safe Schools Coalition has seen an increase in bullying of LGBTQ+ and other marginalized students and a lack of appropriate responses at the school level. It is imperative that the Board takes a firm stance and commits to implementing systemic changes at both the district and individual building levels. We recommend a cohesive plan to train all staff on inclusive strategies, bullying intervention, and equity across the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nikita Bogdanov, and I believe she's giving two minutes from Jordan Wellness, is that correct? Other way around, okay. Yes?
No, I'm Nikita.
You're Nikita, okay.
Yeah, it's okay, common confusion. Hi, so yeah, my name's Nikita, and I work as a substitute teacher with the district. In the course of this work, I've visited upwards of 10 different schools, and it's allowed me to familiarize myself with a number of different school cultures and classrooms, and to gain an interesting perspective on learning as it happens in these spaces. And I just want to share with you some observations as they relate to Chromebooks, and also to share some concerns. Several weeks ago, I worked with 6th grade students in their language arts classes, and what I witnessed is typical of students and classrooms using Chromebooks. While some stayed on task, many repeatedly flipped between tabs to change music, shop for shoes, search a funny image, or see if their friend replied in their Gmail chat. And again, just yesterday, in a high school classroom, I observed that a third of those students that were supposed to be working independently repeatedly switched back and forth between the task at hand and any one of a litany of useless websites. Teachers, mind you, have no way of systematically blocking websites or locking screens. And although this happens in part because I'm a substitute, and they think they can get away with it, I think there are deeper reasons that underlie this behavior. I'm concerned that in the name of early adoption and innovation, many of the schools in which I work have integrated Chromebooks without providing the requisite support structures for both students and teachers. And absent of this, my fear is that instead of developing citizens and independent thinkers, the pervasive use of Chromebooks is instead developing uninformed consumers who lack the attention span and academic readiness to enter the world in a meaningful and engaged capacity. This is not to say the technology is fundamentally flawed, not at all, but simply to point out that in many cases, it seems to have been deployed haphazardly. Have teachers had the time and training to adapt lesson plans to the digital age? Have IT administrators deployed appropriate computer controls? Moreover, there's emerging evidence that suggests that technology integration is not needs-blind and differently affects students from different socioeconomic backgrounds. As a result, I fear that our schools are not only failing to prepare students academically, but that they're complicit in widening the glaring achievement gap. During my undergraduate study at Stanford, at the opening of my first philosophy course, Professor Tamar Shapiro warned us all that it would be exceedingly challenging. Not, however, because we were inexperienced freshmen, but because we'd grown up in the age of Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, all platforms to diminish our ability to immerse ourselves in deep continued study. Reflecting on this experience, I'm frankly appalled that the district has allowed schools to adopt computers with so little oversight. For teachers, yes, but more importantly, for students. If adults struggle to unplug, can we really expect our students, when given an open portal to the internet, to develop the self-control they will need after high school? Is it really digital literacy if our students know how to use a computer but can't put together an argument because they can't focus for long enough? Admittedly, I've been to one school in which technology was well-integrated, and that was at Summit Charter School. At Summit, however, there were many other differences, and it was very easy to work with the students there who were more compliant and respectful. What this experience suggests to me is that perhaps we should focus on lowering class sizes, creating welcoming and supportive classroom and school cultures, and developing basic academic competencies before outsourcing learning to the digital. What if the majority of the funding spent on technology went instead to hiring more teachers or to training? I urge the Board to investigate the use of technology in the classroom, drawing on the latest research to assess what successful technology integration looks like. And while I hope the Board will better support teachers, most importantly, I implore you to focus on creating the kinds of digital structures that will allow our students, regardless of socioeconomic status, to engage in deep knowledge work and to build their ability for self-regulation. Above all, I hope the Board will prioritize our students, faculty, and staff over the public image of digital innovation. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maxine Most.
I'm here tonight to talk about open enrollment, and I have to say, with all due respect, I think the Superintendent's characterization of the problem with the open enrollment process is really not accurate. This year, the Open Enrollment Office, without prior notification, without any community input, changed the process after everybody had done their open enrollments. And people were notified, some people, not everyone, were notified via email right before. And essentially, what they did, apparently, is rather than use traditional lottery system, they used some kind of swapping arrangement to try to increase the number of spaces that were available, which I think on its face is a great idea. The problem is, people didn't know that, and because of the way the program was implemented, there's no way to know whether or not that negatively impacted any particular student and they lost their place, because they did it without previously doing the lottery and being able to compare it to the existing lottery system. So essentially, people are up in arms because there's a lot of leapfrog going on, there's all kinds of games being played to open up more spots. I appreciate the intention to open up more spots, I don't appreciate the fact that this was done untransparently, without any knowledge, and done in a way that there's no way to actually compare the results of the new system to what had happened previously. So it's really enraging, there are a lot of people angry about it. I personally think the whole thing should be done over, because it was unfairly administered. Or you should just let everybody who open-rolled into their school, because apparently, the kids that benefited the most were the kids at Fairview and Boulder High, who were swapped. This really drives a concern I have about the broader open enrollment process in this district, which I think is inherently unfair. The sibling priority is unfair, I have a friend who has two sets of twins, and every time they've open-enrolled, they get in because they have multiple chances that nobody else has because they don't have twins. The legacy system, where you allow people to get in because their older siblings have got in, is unfair to people with single children. The teacher and staff prioritization has been a nightmare, there are actually teachers that have gamed the system. I know a teacher at my daughter's school who moved to another school so she could get her kid in. Then when he didn't do well there and went back to his home school, she moved back to the school she was at. So the system is being gamed, and I just think that it shouldn't be a perk for people who work in the district. I know parents, two family parents where the second parent isn't working, who go get a job at a school so they can get their kid in. I'm a single, working mom, I don't have that opportunity. So I think really what we need to do now is recognize open enrollment as what it is, which is a very limited resource in this district, and rethink the entire system, take away the prioritization, make it a pure open lottery. And one thing that I think would also help would be to, once somebody gets into open enrollment, if you open-enroll your kid in elementary school and they get in, you should have to go to the back of the line for middle school, and the same with high school. So I think there are lots, excuse me, a lot of ways that we can rethink the system to make it more equitable, to take away some of these prioritizations that really favor more highly educated, wealthier families, and really implement a system for everybody that's going to be fair in a way that doesn't make people feel like there's all kinds of mysterious things going on without our knowledge, and we really don't understand what opportunities our kids have to get to school. Thank you, I'm sorry I went over.
Thank you. Are we having a problem with our Are we having a problem with our lighting system?
Yes, I'm having problems with my camera.
Okay. Okay, our next speaker is John Hoffman.
I'm also a member of Boulder Valley Safe School Coalition, which we use the acronym of BVSSC. And I want to commend you for the policies you've initiated in the last nineteen and a half years. I was one of the founding members with Gene Hodges of starting the BVSSC. And one of the reasons we started the BVSSC, when I was teaching in St. Braine, I came out to my students as a gay man and were silenced by my principal. So we think it's really important to support not only the children, but the staff and the parents. And I just want to reiterate what Debbie said. Keep in mind these values and successes that you have supported over the years. And in BVSSC, we would support the next superintendent be a candidate who prioritizes this important work and who has a vision to implement widespread, consistent policies for LGBT students and students of color. As a board, continue to examine the gap between the policies and practice. While we've had some successes, yet many of our schools do not provide the basic right to safe bathrooms and challenging facilities, like a gender-neutral bathroom for those students who need it. And finally, unfortunately, the Safe School Coalition this year has seen an increase of bullying of our LGBT students and other marginalized students and a lack of appropriate response at the school level. It is imperative for the board to take a firm stand and commit to implementing systemic changes at both the district and the individual building levels. We recommend a cohesive plan to train all staff on inclusive strategies, bullying intervention, and equity across the curriculum. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Lord.
Good evening. My name's Mike Lord, and I live in Lewisville and have kids in the district. And up till about six weeks ago, I was a BVSD school bus driver. And there's two issues. One is my supervisor put me in a position of choosing either taking care of my family or getting fired. That's why I resigned. And I've got a letter written on that that I want to give to all of you. And secondly, is there's a really dangerous situation being allowed in the transportation department, specifically with bus drivers, that I'm not going to go into now, but I have a two-page report on that in here for you. And I think that the school board needs to look at themselves and decide what you want to do. You'll be the only ones with information, it's not being given to anybody else. It'll just be you all right there. And then you can decide what to do from there. Okay?
And thank you, and any handouts you can give to Laura, and she'll pass them out to us. Thanks. Our next speaker is Jenna Clinchard.
Hi, I'm Jenna Clinchard, and I too am a I'm a member of the Boulder Valley Safe Schools Coalition. And I would really, really like to commend all of you for your commitment for enacting the policies and practices that you have in this, in the district. My family and I moved here almost three years ago because our daughter came out as transgender when she was nine. And I was frantically on the web, you know, on the Internet, looking for places to move. And I thought, oh my gosh, we're going to have to move to the East Coast, we're going to have to go to Vermont, this is the only place that's going to work. And then I found Boulder. And I read the policies, and I thought, wow, we only have to move an hour and a half away now. And I was so incredibly grateful. And Jude has found schools that she's safe in, and she can be herself and live as her true self, and that's a gift. That is a gift for any parent. And I know when she goes out the door, she's going to be okay, and she's going to be safe. So again, I can't thank you all enough for doing that and continuing the work and support for the Boulder Valley Safe Schools Coalition and the LGBTQ community. So I'm going to ask the exact same thing, you know, just keep in mind the values and successes in our continued search for our new superintendent. I did meet both of them, and I thought they were both quite lovely. We would support the candidate who prioritizes the important work and who has the vision to implement the widespread consistency policy. And as a board, if we can all work together to kind of close that gap between policy and practice. And unfortunately, we have seen more bullying increase. And I know, from what I've learned in this community and from this, sorry, school system, that you guys don't enjoy hearing that, and I know that you're willing to work with us and to continue to work with us, and hopefully, the new superintendent will be as well. So that's all. Ooh, it's loud. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pauline Penfold.
Good evening. Thanks to all of you board members. You have a very important job and often thankless. And I'm here to speak about the dedicated and purchased 9.7 acres in Lake Shore Estates. I'm a Boulder native and attended Boulder Valley Schools, graduated from Boulder High. I'm also a retired BVSD educator of 31 years. I was hired when Virginia Patterson was the president of the school board, so that dates me. Initially, I taught junior high and then middle school science, and moved to high school social studies. The last 10 years of my career was as the social studies chair at Monarch High School, where I initially served on the core team with Dr. Bill Johnson to help, you know, create the school and the programs and the philosophy, and it was a very exciting time. Monarch was the last high school that BVSD built, and it was on a large piece of farmland in Lewisville with lots of room, not in a residential neighborhood. And there was room to grow as the population increased. Proposing the Summit Academy High School in Lake Shore Estates seems to be, to put quite a strain on the neighborhood. It might put quite a strain. There are no sidewalks in our neighborhood. The RTD runs the 225 east and west on baseline. There are no cross-RTD routes. There's already traffic issues at Platt Middle School during their morning and afternoon. And I'm afraid that adding 600 new commuters would be a real bottleneck to the neighborhood. I think the idea of four homes on the existing platted land or a solar farm might be much less impactful on the residents of Lake Shore Estates, Ridgely Hills, and the Reserve. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Kissinger.
Hello, I'm Ashley Kissinger. I'm an attorney. I'm a mother of an eight-year-old at Bear Creek Elementary, a three-year-old who will be a BVSD student. And I am a member of Boulder Rockin' Moms, which is a Yahoo group slash email listserv that you guys may be familiar with. A lot of rabble-rousing goes on there. I was upset and concerned when I read an email over a year ago posted by Anna Seeger, who spoke earlier to you, and about the violent and sexual content that's easily accessible on Chromebooks in the schools. And I don't get upset easily, I'm a litigation attorney. I also happen to be a First Amendment defense attorney, so I'm all for free speech. But when I read what I read, I thought, I became very concerned. I have been engaged in email conversation a little bit with Anna over the past year, but the demands of work in parenthood often intervene. I then spoke with some people at my elementary school who's then suggested, from the email thread, that it seems like the district is suggesting that the schools should just implement classroom policies, classroom management policies, which they do. But those don't really address the fundamental problem of access. And we all know, especially from Nikita's testimony, that kids will access inappropriate content during school. So I would urge you to convene some sort of a working group around this issue of Internet safety. I have no subject matter expertise, but I'm concerned and, you know, would be happy to facilitate or even help organize. I don't know how school board working groups get convened, but I would urge you to convene whatever sort of study group you could around that issue. And I have a document to give.
Laura.
Your assistant, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Charlevois. Not sure about that.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to express concerns my husband and I both have about the open enrollment process for incoming ninth-grade students of BVSD. We live in northwest Lafayette. My husband and I believe that all the high schools and all the schools in Boulder District are very good. But we also believe that BVSD is not being transparent about last-minute changes that were made to the open enrollment policy related to the swap of incoming ninth graders. And we also believe that BVSD is not following their own policy regarding waitlists. Our home school is Centaurus. Our daughter did open enroll in both Boulder and Fairview. When we entered our daughter in the open enrollment process, all the information that I found online was that it was a very open and it was a lottery process, with notifications starting on January 31st. Late in the day, on January 29th, actually at 4:51 PM, I received an email from BVSD that ninth-grade open enrollment would actually not be a full lottery process, but rather, it was going to be preempted by a swap between schools before any lottery took place. Regardless of the rationale, this is changing the rules at the last minute without any public input, and we find that to be very unacceptable. The suggestion in documents I found online that the swap improves the odds of students in the lottery is actually a manipulation of statistics. It markedly improves the odds for students in Boulder and Fairview neighborhoods to have their school of choice, and actually worsens the odds for others seeking spots in those schools. Further, it's come to our attention that the waitlist process of admitting the next students on the list for Fairview is not being followed. I have evidence that students from East County with lower numbers on the waitlist are being passed over for students from Boulder who have higher numbers. I've heard there's overcrowding at Boulder High, and what the district staff did does relieve this overcrowding, but it is not an equal opportunity, and it is not following the own policy that Boulder Valley has. So I would urge the board that if you have been, we're not aware of this, to understand it better, reconsider the issue, hold staff accountable for this breach of public process, and not institute a swap in coming years. Thank you, I apologize for going over.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Sankey. And do you want to come up with a group?
They're all hanging out back there.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for having me, BVSD board members, Superintendent Stevenson, and members of the Boulder community. My name's Diane Sankey, and I'm the chair of the Summit Middle School Board of Directors. As the BVSD board members know, Summit has recently submitted an application to expand our school's charter from a six-to-eight middle school to include grades nine through 12. In a nutshell, Summit Academy looks to provide students with a personalized, innovative high school where the curriculum is built on rigorous academic standards, interdisciplinary global themes, engaged learning, and social-emotional development. In order to bring to life why Summit Academy is needed in our community, the next four speakers will bring unique perspectives about the opportunity. So with that, I'll give the rest of my allotted time to Alan, just in case he needs it.
Thank you.
Alan Rodriguez.
All right, so hi there, my name is Alan Rivera Rodriguez, and I'm currently an eighth grader at Summit Middle School. And I think Summit Academy is a great idea because Summit is already a great place to study and learn. And Summit has a lot of nice, great teachers, and they're all really helpful. All of the classes at Summit are really fun but challenging at the same time. Summit has more advanced classes than most other schools and expands your learning more. And I think that if we could expand Summit to include a high school, it would give current Summit students and future Summit students a better chance to take part in the Summit experience. Summit has opened up many doors for me, in particular with National History Day, which is a nationwide contest on a certain history topic. And for my topic, I chose Cesar Chavez, and I had a lot of help from many of the teachers at Summit. And I was able to make it to Nationals, where it's the highest rank of the competition. Summit is just a great place. I was able to go and visit Washington DC, the White House, and many other places I wouldn't ever have imagined of visiting. And Summit kind of really helps out students to reach their top priorities and potentials in life. And if Summit were to be expanded into a high school, I think it would improve the future lives of future Summit students and other students in Boulder Valley. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ella Boesberg.
Hello, I'm Ella Boesberg. I'm a graduate of Summit and a ninth-grade student at Fairview. So when I came to Fairview, I was very surprised because it was a lot easier than what I had experienced in my three years at Summit. And also, at Fairview, it wasn't emphasized that being smart is a good thing. People don't really participate in class because they feel like, oh, people will judge me. And also, it's so big, you barely get to see the people you know, and there's not as many opportunities for you. For me personally, I would really like to be able to explore just like career paths and college majors for my future, but at Fairview, I haven't been able to find the opportunities to do that. And you also have to be highly independent. But having gone to Summit, I was really able to ease into high school. I found it very easy because Summit helped me with my study habits, my work ethic, my confidence in myself, and gave me the necessary tools to complete any assignment that has been thrown at me. I think that Summit Academy would be an amazing opportunity, and to have a mentor to stand by you all four years and to help advise you would be really great. It also helped prepare me for the real world, which I'll be going into, hopefully not so soon. And it gave me an opportunity to explore my passions or to find out what I don't want to do with the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Walton Bullard.
Hello, my name is Walton Bullard. I am also a Summit graduate, and I am also a ninth grader at Fairview. Summit, it definitely prepared me for high school. It gave me a lot of strong bases for studies. It also taught me a lot of really good studying habits and how to manage my time. Also, how to be, in some ways, independent and still be able to work well in groups. It also helped me prioritize tasks and be able to know, be able to plan out what I want to do. But, and then, high school. It really did meet a lot of my expectations, such as all of the, it had a lot more of the freedom than middle school. All of the classes, they were something that I could, that was something I would flow into, and it made it easier transition going to Summit. But one of the big problems that I have with high school currently is there aren't a lot of opportunities that underclassmen have, which a lot of upperclassmen do, such as at Fairview, there is the National Honor Society, which is something that I at Fairview, there is the National Honor Society, which is something that I was really interested to do, but I never knew about it or even got the chance to learn about it until this year as a freshman. So I wouldn't be able, which kind of makes it harder for me to know if I really wanted to do it because of, we never really got a big basis or really got to know what happens there. Also, we don't have, get a lot of chances to think about what we might want to do in our future or what areas that we are really interested in. And also, there's not a lot of mentoring that we get to do. We do have our counselors, which we talk to, but outside of that, we don't really get to explore any of the, again, we don't really get to explore any other subjects outside of just being able to go to different electives, which we might find interesting, but never really some big basis that lets us see what's happening outside in the world and also what other things that we might be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Stewart. And John Kemble's not here, correct? Yeah.
I'm Debbie Stewart, also a BVSD parent since 2001. My family has always been big supporters of BVSD schools. I think the local high schools' options are exceptional, but in a community like Boulder, there should be another option. It speaks to a different way of learning, to a different experience. Fairview was a great fit for our oldest daughter. She thrived and took advantage of all that the school had to offer. For our second daughter, everything looked good on paper, NHS, Ivy, art student, state track team. But the reality is, a large traditional high school was not a good fit for her. On the contrary, it was an incredibly difficult, devastating, anxiety-filled experience. And by the time she graduated, she was no longer the same curious, passion-filled learner she was when she started her high school journey. Boulder needs a different high school option for students wanting more personalized, passion-based learning that balances academic excellence with high supports and a more innovative way of teaching. Summit Academy could be that option. Summit Middle School has a proven track record of success, providing accelerated program with high supports. They have the capacity and the desire to lead a project that could serve as a learning model, a learning lab of sorts, so that BVSD could essentially field test on a small scale, a new learning model that if successful, successful could be scaled up and replicated, adapted to fit and serve the needs of students in other schools. Summit Academy could be an opportunity for the district to evolve local education into a more collaborative process that capitalizes on amazing innovative resources that Boulder has to offer in its tech startups, its research and development industry, and its social entrepreneurship organizations. I ask that you look closely at our Summit Academy application as it is not just a charter expansion project, but as a chance for us to partner with the district to explore a path to 21st century learning through community-wide project that can ultimately benefit schools throughout BVSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teresa Silver or Gary Silver.
I'm speaking on behalf of Teresa and myself. I speak as a parent of a child whose waitlist number for Fairview High School was bypassed in order to give the seat to children further down the waitlist, whose only qualification is that their home school is Boulder High. We're upset that this happened. Over the weekend, we learned that our child is not the only one affected by this blatant disregard. Nobody can reasonably say that the normal rules about waitlists were followed fairly. We were never notified that this was even happening by BVSD. We only happened to hear of it by word of mouth. So I would say that BVSD knows it did wrong and was trying to hide it. This secrecy erodes our trust. I'm also upset that the swap policy was instituted at the last moment with no prior notification, as you've heard several people mention tonight. There was no mention of it prior to the open enrollment period. It was dumped onto eighth grade families without taking any input from those whose futures were going to be impacted. I've been told that the concept of a swap has been tossed around in the past, so I see no reason why it was never brought up for public viewing before it was too late. This is a pretty radical change to open enrollment, to have been made behind closed doors and without public comment. As my background is in science, I believe in evidence-based conclusions, so I would like to see proof of how this swap ended up with more students getting their first-choice school compared to in years past. It is one thing to make claims. I request the numbers to back it up. I think any consideration of moving forward with the swap process should be put on hold until there is an opportunity for community input and we receive proof that this process is done in a fair manner that doesn't give preferential treatment to only certain schools and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Dean.
Last year, I and fellow parents spoke at multiple board meetings to bring awareness to the board about the weak internet filters at all elementary schools in BVSD. We had specific examples and brought pictures of the images viewable even with the filters. We also met with Andrew Moore, the CIO, to discuss the internet filtering. This year on October 2nd, I and fellow parents met with Andrew Moore, Sandy Riplinger, and Cynthia Stevenson at Pioneer to ask what is being done to improve internet security. This meeting was over five months ago. Action items from the meeting included Andrew to meet with district tech reps and DTAC to share the internet concerns as a scenario for possible changes in practice. The board was scheduled to talk about internet safety at a work session yet to be determined but planned, I believe, for the fall of 2017. The internet use policy created in 2012 was to be updated. The whitelist of appropriate internet links solutions would be considered. Request was made for a study on the impact of technology use and misuse on a child's brain. Andrew was to attend a GaggleNet presentation on Tuesday, October 24th, to learn more about this tool, which I noted was mentioned by one of the superintendent candidates as being used in their school district. Budget consideration was discussed to be given to making technology support, such as additional staff, a priority through the budget process. Kelly Lopez has asked for updates to these action items and been given very vague to no answers at all. Andrew states he brought awareness to the DTAC team, but when Kelly conversed with a DTAC member, they were completely unaware of the lack of internet filtering and the concerns being raised. Who exactly is in charge at this district? The board points to Andrew Moore. Andrew points to the superintendent and the board. We, the parents, receive little response to these issues. As a concerned parent, I have yet to see any sort of action that, number one, addresses internet safety, and, number two, educates students, parents, and teachers on internet usage within our elementary schools. I've only seen a push to get more Chromebooks into every classroom. Please commit to delivering on the aforementioned meeting action items in the next one month. Also, please appoint one BVSD employee to be responsible for communication and ownership of this issue. Ten months is too long for this issue to not be responsibly managed. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Lopez. And we already had Kevin Riordan, right? Okay. So that concludes public participation. Thank you for coming. And now we'll move on to board communication. Who would like to begin? Kitty.
First of all, I want to thank everybody who came here and spoke. I think it's important for parents to be able to express their views and frustrations to the board. And then, I was really dismayed to hear that the LGBTQ population is still being bullied in BVSD. I was also part of the Safe Schools Coalition, not at the very beginning, but very early on, and was a member for a number of years. And my daughter identifies as queer, and she was bullied at Monarch High School. So even though we have all these great policies, I agree that there needs to be more work done because no child should be bullied for any reason at all. And the other thing I wanted to mention was that today I spoke with a parent who has a son at Lewisville Middle School, and his son is staying home tomorrow because he doesn't feel safe not walking out. And that really dismayed me as well because, as I said, no child should be bullied, no child should be made to feel uncomfortable, even if it's not intentional. And I'm going to suspect that on the part of a lot of the kids and staff, it would not be intentional, but we need to recognize that anyway and overcome it because I almost cried when he told me about this. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay. Other board members? Kathy?
I too would like to thank the members of the community and the students who've already left, I'm assuming they had to go home and do their homework, for attending. I always appreciate hearing, as Kitty said, from the members of our community and our staff and students, and I hope they always feel welcome and will come and tell us their concerns and sometimes maybe even come and tell us something good that's going on in the district, fingers crossed, right? And just also wanted to share that on the issue that we addressed during our work session, I was at the CASB Winter Leadership Conference, and the topic was open enrollment, and we had some very open enrollment and choice. We had some very interesting presentations that I'm not going to spend the time to talk about tonight because I'm happy to talk about it later, but the agenda's on the CASB website. But it was really helpful and interesting to have CASB take that on as one of their, the only topic of the conference. And then we also had some presentations from current legislative issues, and one of the presentations was on PERA, and as I understand it, the PERA bill dropped today in the Senate, and so it could have a pretty significant impact on our budget as we go forward, so we will talk about that a little bit on the legislative update. But I just think it was really helpful to get as much information as we could from the CASB conference. Call it association of school boards.
Next, anyone? Sam?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out on such a wide range of issues. We appreciate hearing from you. Ms. Clinchard, you know, we are dismayed to hear that there's a gap between practice and policy in this district, and it's certainly my commitment to continue to uphold those values and continue the good work that we've already done, but I'll follow up with the superintendent on those gaps. And also, Dr. Stevenson, if, I'll submit an RFI, but to Ms. Dean's questions about internet filtering and some of the action items that apparently came out of a meeting at Pioneer, I can follow up on an RFI, but I'd be interested in knowing where we are on some of those items as well.
Andrew is out of town, so he would be our expert. But what I can tell you is that they have looked at whitelisting and they have looked at blacklisting. And one of the things the parents asked was that we do an investigation of what other districts were doing, and I know Andrew has done that. So far, we haven't found a practical solution, but he is still examining it, still trying to figure out what could we do to solve the problem. This hasn't been a widespread issue, but I fully recognize that any parent who's dealing with it, it's very difficult. So Andrew and I will have another conversation. I took several notes, and I know he has been working on it, but they haven't resolved it at this point as to what would be practical for Boulder Valley schools. So when he gets back into town, we'll be meeting.
Okay. Sally?
Yeah, I think that the public participation tonight just hints at how complex this district is and how important it is for us to communicate with all of you and to be incredibly transparent in our decisions. So so many of you spoke tonight about ways in which we haven't been completely transparent, and I would just, I think that we probably need a work session just to talk about that very issue, and I want to thank all of you for coming forward and sharing your perspective on that. Cindy, I'd like to follow up with you. Maybe you can just say right now, around the Bear Creek principal position, was that process any different than a process we follow ordinarily?
No, that was our standard process. Given that it's a personnel issue, I'm happy to inform the board at a later time, but I'm really not comfortable addressing it.
I'm just asking about the process.
Okay. The process is what we usually follow. There were 34 applicants. The 34 applicants were narrowed to 25. 25 went through the screener and the video interview. The committee then looked at 10 of those and selected four people to interview. So everyone was given the opportunity, everyone did the screener, everyone down to 25 were given the opportunity to do the video interviews. So, and I'm happy to give you all more information, but...
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we...
Okay. It was absolutely our regular process. And in fact, Mike Grados and I met with Mr. Chang today and explained the entire process to him, and he was very gracious, very, very kind. And, you know, we welcome questions about school decisions.
Thank you. So on the subject of security cameras, I agree with the gentleman who came forward. I'm sorry I didn't write down your name, but spoke about our policy not having enough safeguards in it for possible misuse of cameras in the school. So I, if that person's still here, I welcome them to contact me individually, and we can talk about what kind of language that that person thinks is appropriate. That would be really helpful for me. On the subject of internet filtering, I have questioned the district several times on this issue ever since it was brought to us last year, and I would encourage us to have a work session on this topic. I think it's time to do that. We've heard enough about internet filtering. I just want to say to Nikita, if you're still here, you know, I have raised issues about Chromebooks and their impact on learning in this district, as well as the student data privacy issues that accompany Chromebooks and the use of technology. And I just think that I probably hasn't, haven't been as successful as I could have been in my conversations with the board because I am not even close to as eloquent as you were, Nikita, and I think you described perfectly what my concerns are. And I would invite you two to reach out to me and so we can discuss a way that we can break this down and maybe bring it to the district in a way that we can address some of the issues you discussed one by one because I think we absolutely need to do that. The thought that the proliferation of Chromebooks in our district could actually be widening the achievement gap, I'm sure would be horrific to all of us to believe that that could be true since the rationale for issuing Chromebooks was exactly the opposite. So I would like to have more information and more research done on that aspect of Chromebooks. So, and those of you who came to talk about Lake Shore and Summit Academy, you know, we sit up here and we hear all of you, so Summit Academy, I think, is going to be presenting at a work session in the next few weeks. And I would really encourage this board, I mean, adding a charter school is a very big decision, as are many of these other issues that have come before us, and I would really, really hope that we wouldn't make that decision until we have a permanent superintendent sitting here with us. Thank you.
I think everybody's touched on every aspect I have about what everyone brought forward tonight, and I'm concerned about all of them. I'll add something on the insight survey. It's bothered me and many people that it filters out people that, and you practice for it, and you can go online, and I've done insight survey. So, but I always hate to reference my own experiences, but I want you to know that I can relate to many of you. Having been a classroom teacher in our district, I had issues with the internet, my students accessing things and having to send them to the principal because it's hard as a teacher to watch in the classroom and stop what's going on, and I think we have to have a better way to do that. Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody that came and spoke tonight. It's always a pleasure to hear from the community. It's frustrating to hear the frustrations that you're experiencing. There was a lot that we talked, that you brought forth to us tonight, the internet, the bullying, open enrollment, the Lake Shore Estates, et cetera. But I think, three things I think that really hit me pretty well was with Mrs. Kissinger, I think, taking your idea... your idea, and maybe we could talk about this during the agenda setting, but convening a working group on internet safety, I think, would be a pretty good idea, but maybe, maybe broaden that group to talk about the, the issues of Chromebooks and all of that. I'm also thinking that we need to relook at open enrollment and what our policies and how we need to relook at our policies that relates to open enrollment for a number of reasons. One is we just had a charter school workshop, a work session before the board meeting. And as you know, that many of our, at least a couple of our charter schools, they, they don't have a whole lot of kids of color or low-income kids in their enrollment. And I think we need to look at that also in terms of open enrollment policy. The internet filters, I think, ought to be included in whatever working group that we put together. And John Leff, John Hoffman, I've known John for a long time and I was also a big part of the Safe Schools Coalition. And having a daughter that's lesbian, I clearly understand exactly what's going on and I'm telling you that it really breaks my heart to hear that this is still continuing, even though we do have, like you said, Kitty, all the best policies in the world, but we're all human, we need to do more. So I just want to thank you all for bringing all these issues to our attention. Thank you very much.
And I'll also extend my thanks and appreciate coming here. I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments as well. I support looking at the use of Chromebooks in our classrooms and, and always support that. I think this is a new initiative and we need to continue to improve it and make sure they're being used effectively. I'm very sensitive about this idea of tabbing between programs and not creating focus. I'm, I actually do it myself and can't imagine that would be good for someone younger who's trying to learn. Another piece is the, on the filtering, I hope we continue to find a solution quickly on that. It's, you know, for elementary kids in particular, really for all kids, it's just not appropriate. And I hope we can find a solution quickly. And then on the open enrollment, I had some concerns about the swap. I, I think it's a really well-intended, as Ms. Most said, it was a very well-intended idea because we have this issue where kids are on the waitlist for opposing schools and you wonder why can't they just each go to the school they want, they're both on the waitlist. And we're always trying to solve that problem. I think it makes sense to look at how the swap works and make sure that there aren't students that have sort of a more valuable currency in the open enrollment process. And I think that's what we all don't want to feel, is that one kid is worth a little bit more in the open enrollment process. And I think it's always good to look at our OE policy. I, I look at them frequently. We made a change early in the fall that had to do with preferences given to out-of-district students and I, I think that we can look at them again. And thank you, Richard, for bringing up, you know, preferences around special education, free and reduced lunch, English language learners. There are actually a lot of schools now giving preference. Denver started a program where schools that don't have strong representation from those subgroups are starting to give preference, even in their neighborhood schools, as well as their charter schools. And then I wanted to thank the Safe School Coalition. I ran into Ms. Clinchard, I think it was, and we had a conversation after one of the candidate forums, and I realized that I didn't even think to ask the superintendent candidates about their views on the LGBTQ. And it was great to have her there because I take it for granted in this community and don't think a lot about it. And so I really appreciated your advocacy, really starting last Thursday, not, you know, today is great, but being there at the forum on Thursday was wonderful. And then I'll close with just, just thanking the community and thanking the staff for all of their help with the superintendent forums that we had on Thursday and Friday. We just, I can't even tell you how much work Laura put into making this a smooth process and we appreciate the patience of the community. You know, it feels fast, it feels rushed, and we spent a lot of time over the weekend looking at impression sheets, trying to understand the community. We're still in the process of understanding, you know, where we are and still looking at impression sheets and under, you know, getting the participation. So I just wanted to thank you all for being, for participating in this process. There are people here who were part of the process. So with that, we can move on to our next item, which is an information item, and I'm wondering if anyone has a legislative update today? Kathy?
Not much of a legislative update. The Joint Budget Committee's doing figure setting yesterday and today, and I think the net result of the figure setting was that they want to wait until the March forecast comes out on Monday to decide what they really want to do with the figure setting. So as I understand it, we still haven't even figured out whether we're going to have the $13 million in supplemental because we're trying to wait and see what the overall figures, overall budget forecast looked like on Monday. The governor's request for $100 million buydown and the negative factor is still on hold pending Monday, so, and as I mentioned earlier, the para bill dropped and I think there'll be some interesting modifications between the time it leaves the senate and if it makes its way over to the house. But I just wanted to let the board know about the appropriations and figure setting and I think we'll know more when we meet again.
Okay, anything else on legislative issues? Other board members? All right, and then we're going to look at revisions to Regulation ECA hyphen R Video Surveillance Equipment. Is someone going to, there we go, okay. Didn't see you over there.
All right, good evening. You should have on your board agenda access to the proposed revisions to ECA R. Hopefully you have that. The purpose of the update is to authorize video surveillance equipment in and around our schools, on district property and on school transportation vehicles. The reason for the video surveillance equipment is that we recognize it's our responsibility to protect district property and ensure the health, welfare, and safety of our students, staff, and other people in our facilities. The video surveillance system is capable of capturing images, not audio, I want to make sure that's clear, and transferring such images to data storage system servers. The proposed revisions to the regulation would only allow interior cameras to be located in common areas on district property. Examples of these areas include hallways, cafeterias, stairwells, gymnasiums, and buses. The regulation does not allow interior cameras in areas such as locker rooms and restrooms, nor does it allow us to install concealed cameras. Video monitors will be located in administrative office of the school and in district central security office. The use of the video, building surveillance equipment shall be supervised and controlled by the principal and/or the director of safety and security. The director of safety and security will designate who operates and maintains the recordings. The director of transportation will be responsible for supervising and controlling the camera system on our buses. Recordings of teacher instruction or educational programming is not intended to be covered by this policy. So those are the major highlights. Any questions that have come up?
I just want to assure the public, and I think Melissa will tell me if I'm wrong on this, that these are subject to the same privacy that student records are, they're considered student records, any information on the videos. So we already have fairly strong, I mean, there's other issues I suppose we could raise, but student records are protected by FERPA. And to the extent there's individual student identifiable information on the videos, I think it's all protected under our student records policy. Am I at least close on that?
To the extent if there's just people walking in a hallway, it's not going to be an educational record. So to the extent there are just children walking in the hallway or some common area, it's not automatically going to be an educational record, but if there's something that, for instance, leads to discipline, like a fight, then yes, then once those children are identified, that would be part of their education record and subject to FERPA.
And that is addressed under student records on the, under the regulation.
I requested information on suspensions of students and received a lot of information that concerned me a lot in terms of the disproportionate number of students that are being expelled, or not expelled, but suspended, suspended for a multiple number of reasons, particularly around your Latino kids and your white students. I mean, it's high already. I think you've got like about, pretty close to 900, 1,000 suspensions throughout the school year, more or less, give or take a few. And with, with cameras, I guess my concern is how much, the increase in suspensions, I mean, is, are we going to see a big increase in suspensions? Somebody mentioned something about discrimination as it relates to kids of color and stuff like that, that it might, it might kind of be a magnet for that. I'm not saying that it is going to be, but those are the things that concern me about the cameras right now, especially having to look, having looked at all the suspensions that we have in this district, particularly around the numbers and the comparisons in numbers and the disproportionate number of Latino kids that are being suspended versus the white kids. I think there were like about, if I can say, maybe pretty close to 600 kids, 600 white kids suspended throughout the year. If you look at the number of white kids versus Latino kids, and there's like about pretty close to 400 Latino kids suspended throughout the year. I mean, can you see the, how out of whack that is? So I guess that's a concern I have and I'm wondering if there's any safety measures that we can include in there, you know, how do we handle that? It could also be the reverse. It could also decrease suspensions because now you have evidence, now you have proof.
You know, Richard, we could reach out to our peer districts to find out if they have any data on that, if, if suspensions increased with interior security cameras. I don't know that, but I know the majority of our peer school districts...
Yeah. I, I also would like to point out, Richard, that you've brought up a larger issue. It goes far beyond video surveillance. It goes far beyond, it goes to how we think about our schools, how we think about student discipline, how we support students before they get to that point. So, you know, the only thing I would ask is we separate the safety of having video surveillance from the expectations about how we deal with children. Because your point is really well-taken, but it's far deeper than video cameras. And if we had any system or structure that was increasing our suspension expulsion rate for our minority students, we really need to look at that. So I think it's a really good question.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that you understand that because if I look at the, the information being placed on the student's permanent record and all of that stuff, I think that, that's the piece that raises a little bit of red flag for me as it relates to the disproportionate number of incidents that happen in the school districts and, in our school district and, and why does it happen at that rate?
I'm sure you've thought of this, but from my experience, when we put it in at Dakota Ridge Academy with Boulder Community Hospital, we had students come up and, from behind, knew where the cameras were, smeared Vaseline on the lenses. So I'm sure you've thought of those things, but I also had a parent come up to me during the superintendent forums and suggest, would there be a combination of mock and real cameras?
There would not be a combination of mock and real cameras. They'd all be real cameras.
Okay, board members? Shelley?
Yeah, I, I've read a lot about this and I certainly understand the pros and cons of security cameras and I also understand the limitations of them. Columbine, for example, had extensive interior cameras inside of it. It will not stop school shootings, so I think we all need to just be honest about that right now. It might help you catch the person who did it. Typically, those people who are doing that are, you know, not interested in escaping for the most part, so I, I'm not sure what use it has for that either, but aside from all that, I don't think this policy is reflective of best practices and policies around video surveillance. So before we adopt it, I'd like to make some suggestions. Some of those were suggested tonight. I'd like to talk about how we could strengthen a policy like this. I'd also like to point out, Kathy, that in 2011, FERPA was dramatically weakened so that information in our children's student records can flow quite freely out of this district into the hands of numerous third parties. So the, the, sort of the first safeguard against student data privacy being compromised that is recommended by most privacy organizations is to not collect the data in the first place. And so I would want our policy to limit data collection in every possible way so that if we do implement cameras in the schools, they are only for active situations, they're not to collect and store information. And I know in here it says that it'll only be held for, you know, some number of days, but I think that, and I think that's good, but I think that there are more safeguards that need to be put into this policy. And I think Richard's point's a really good one and I, I think that it's unclear how these cameras could be used and for what purposes and whether they could be used for, you know, profiling or for, you know, I'm not sure, I feel like we haven't talked about it enough. I feel like all of a sudden this policy has come to us, we haven't had this conversation in a work session, we haven't all been able to air our concerns about cameras or our recommendations about the policy. So I would hope that this, there's no rush, as far as I can tell, for this to come back on action and I would hope that we would have enough time as a board to really air our concerns about this.
Sam or Kathy? Sam?
I think we should, we should talk about it in a work session. I think that's a good idea. I had some specific points about a couple of the bullets in this policy, but I'll hold those for a future conversation. I appreciate your work on this, Rob and Melissa. I think, you know, I think we can, we can get there on this policy.
Okay, Kathy?
Well, I think a work session's a good idea, but I do get a sense of urgency. This is the first time, and the principals will say this, that they have all come together for this and for the board to ignore that, I think, is, I'm going to use the word stunning because I think it is, and to suggest that we would use cameras to profile students, that our, that our administrators would use these cameras to profile students, it gets me choked up. I can't even imagine that we would think that we would, our administrators would do that. So I think if we can get it scheduled for a work session, and Shelley, if you have specific ideas as to how the policy, we've had it in our, on our board docs for a while now, so if you had specific suggestions, it would be really good if you could get those out there because of course I want the policy and the regulation to reflect best practices. And so if we could get your comments on that as soon as possible, that would be really helpful so that, I would ask that we get this calendared for a work session as soon as we can so we can have a full vetting of the issues and, and move forward, hopefully.
I, I just want to add, I do think it's really important we talk to other districts. And I came from a district that had high school cameras. And the way they worked was you had a bank of, of monitors and people could watch the monitors and you could watch every part of the school. You're right. I mean, one of the things is, if you think about how does, how do cameras increase our safety, it's that you can respond faster when you see something. Because if you can keep an eye on every part of the school and you have something going on, whether it's a fight erupting or someone coming into the school who shouldn't be there, you can see it faster and get there faster. That's the safety factor. So, and as I said, I came out of a system that had them and in the high schools, there would be the bank of monitors so they could watch hallways, common areas, cafeteria, they could watch all those things simultaneously. And yes, you should have teachers in the hallway and yes, all of that is true. It's an additional measure of being able to know what's happening in the building, being able to get to the location very fast. So I just want to point that out because I came from a system that had them.
Okay, other comments? Shelley?
Yeah, Sam, I think it's a good idea to have a work session on this and I would definitely support that. And, you know, I certainly wouldn't say that administrators would intentionally profile anyone. I don't think they intentionally are suspending Latino students at a higher rate than white students either, but that's also happening. So I think that it's just good to look into this and I don't think there's absolutely anything wrong with us having a thorough discussion about this before we make this decision. That's what we're supposed to do as a board, so.
Any other comments? Okay, it sounds like an item for agenda setting and we can move on to our next item. And I think we have an update from the CBOC committee. Welcome, thank you for coming.
And Mike McLaughlin, our CBOC chair, will take over from here.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm here to discharge one of our responsibilities to the board, which is to provide quarterly reports to you all. So thank you for coming and I want to extend a special thanks to Kathy for joining us and Dr. Stevenson for joining us at our CBOC meetings. We, we appreciate that. The next CBOC meeting will be on April 18th at 5:30 PM. The committee has met twice since the... The committee has met twice since the last report to you all. Uh, I wanna highlight a couple of things, and here's some good news for us tonight. I think, uh, one of the highlights about the good work that's being done in the bond program. Particularly at the December meeting, we took action to approve a change in scope on the work for BCSIS and High Peaks to include installation of building-wide air conditioning. This building historically has been very difficult to cool adequately, and the air conditioning could be added and was added within existing budget. Committee felt it was prudent to take advantage of this opportunity and address the issue at this time, and that's what we move forward to doing. Uh, in pursuit to the, uh, some of the conversations that are happening this evening, and in light of the board's recent conversations concerning installing cameras inside the schools and the recent tragic events in Florida, the committee initiated a discussion of how the bond can support increased security and unanimously, unanimously supported the idea of using bond funds to install cameras in common areas inside the schools. Obviously, that's pursuant to the regulations being adopted or changed in order to be able to make that available. But that was a unanimous vote by the committee to, um, potentially use some of the bond funds to, to do that work. Next, I'll move on to financial oversight. At each meeting, the committee reviews the financial reports, and staff presents a forecast of projected recommendations for the bond premium funds. During our last update to you in December, our expenditures were two hundred and eighty-one point five million. As of February thirteenth, we have expended two hundred and ninety-nine, six hundred and ten, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And our contracted commitments, uh, are a total of three hundred and fifty-four, three hundred and eight, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Staff is, uh, tracking project performance in terms of variance. This is an item that, um, our committee has talked a great deal about, and we feel it's an important measure of how well we're, we're doing and, and the, uh, staff is doing. We track variance, uh, in performance from the, uh, uh, terms against the contract bid, and they've shared that, staff has shared that with the committee. For the fifteen projects that are over ninety percent complete, the variance from the contract price is, uh, point two percent under budget. So, it's really good work that's being done by Rob and Kaki and the team, uh, on the bond program. So, I think that's a, a big highlight that I wanted to make you all aware of. Another good piece of news, in December, staff adjusted the projected, uh, interest earnings from four million to seven point five million over the life of the program. So, as we've set those bond, uh, premium funds aside, uh, and the, and the funds that we've gathered from the, from the sale of the bonds aside, they're gaining interest, and that interest, uh, has, uh, has gone up markedly, as you can see. Lastly, I'm gonna talk about a call for new members. Uh, this is, these are volunteer positions, of course, and we're, we have three current vacant positions on the committee. Uh, staff has issued a call for applications for new members, and the candidates will be brought to the board for approvals in April. Next, uh, actually, that's all, all I have for you, but, uh, we'll turn it over to Rob for an update from the rest of the, uh, project progress.
Laura?
What's the status of getting this?
There you go, okay, thank you. We currently have twenty projects under construction or in design. We're looking ahead to having eighteen projects under construction, uh, this summer. I will be honest, we have some hurdles to get over in the next month. We have six projects that still haven't reached, uh, GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price. What we are hearing right now is there is a shortage of electrical contractors. Um, so we are struggling through that. Uh, we had a project that was scheduled to bid the other day. Um, five contractors intended to bid that project, and we received no electrical bids. Um, so we are putting that back on the street. The other issue we're dealing with right now is the steel tariffs that we've all read about in the news. Uh, what is that doing to our construction costs? So, um, we are taking bids on the steel metal building for the central kitchen, and it's poor timing because we expect those costs to increase. So, it does have an impact on us, we are watching that, we are monitoring that. But so far, uh, we have done really well. This is a list of the projects that will be under construction this summer. Not included on this list is Boulder Prep, should be on here, but we also include, or plan to include, uh, to complete Boulder Prep this year. So, as Mike said, twenty projects completed of the sixty-three total, uh, expenditures two hundred and ninety-nine point six, and we're forty-six point three percent of the way through the bond. Now, I would like to introduce, uh, Chris Meyer. Chris is the principal at Brimfield Heights Middle School. We completed Brimfield Heights, uh, in two thousand and sixteen. We thought it'd be good to have Chris here just to talk about how the improvements impacted the learning environment. So, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Thank you, Rob, and, and thanks to everybody, it's nice to be up here. And frankly, it's nice to be up here to deliver some really good news on a, on a heavy evening that, uh, I got to sit through. So, um, Brimfield Heights Middle School, so if you, some of you have visited and, um, done some tours of the work that we've had at Brimfield Heights. What I always say is, I hope you had a chance to come before the construction, because the before and after is really what you need to see, right, and, and keep in mind. So, the other thing that I'm gonna preface this with is, three years ago, if anybody told me that bond work, and I'm sorry, Rob, but, uh, bond work and, and the physical plant of a, of anywhere, much less a school, could have a transformative effect on a, on a school and a culture, I would tell them they were probably a little, uh, you know, not thinking straight, but I've seen it. I saw it on the first day that we had our, our, our bond project, um, mostly completed on the first day of school last year, and when the students and staff worked into the building, you could see, walked into the building, you could see the, their shoulders is kinda like, I'm comfortable, I'm safe. And that's what the bond project did for us first and foremost. Every inch of the building at Brimfield Heights, if you don't know, was, um, covered in the bond project from, maybe it was carpet and paint, it was definitely cooling. I heard about, um, a school building that, that hopefully is following suit. Prior to the bond project, you, you all should know that we had classrooms with kids in them receiving instruction at ninety-eight, ninety-nine degrees, gyms at a hundred and three degrees with kids in the building. That's a thing of the past, and it's the first teacher that came to me and said, you know what, it's really too cool in here in August. Had to take a deep breath and, and, and refocus a little bit. Because it really, again, makes that environment much more, um, permissible to learning, and that's what we're all about. So, honoring students, what we did is we, we came in, we have our, you all know about our guiding principles, the innovation guiding principles, worked with Tiffany Lychuk, who is truly a, um, a gift to our school district for the last two years. And, um, we focused on two guiding principles. First guiding principle is learning is, learning is founded in inquiry, and the other guiding principle that we chose is learning is, um, a social construct, a social process. And we took that for students and staff, so now if you come to the building, which, open invitation always, um, you will see an environment that is more conducive to student and staff collaboration, student cooperation, and inquiry-based learning. Hands-on, small group, um, students who are able to break out and break in and out of groups to learn together and learn for those, the future generations that we have to come. Um, we have our innovation space, we call it, which is the heart of the building. We didn't have a heart of the building, we did not have any sort of, it was a fairly institutional, frankly, place before the construction. We were able to knock down walls and parlay some of our innovation costs with our general construction costs to make a place that is inviting to all students and a center of the building to where all students and staff and community members can access. The beauty of that in our innovation guiding principles and seeing the work that's happening in our innovation space is that it spreads and it's contagious throughout the building as well. And I think that's what you would find if you were in any of our other classrooms. We have classrooms, of course, with our, the four-wall classrooms, but the beauty is that even in those spaces, teachers have been able to take what they've learned and take what we've learned through some professional development, which I think is key as well, of how to use our guiding principles and, and, and implement them for student growth. But to put those in the more traditional physical plant classroom as well. So, that's how Brimfield Heights has come together. What I would say is, just the other day, we had a number of alumni come back to Brimfield Heights and walk through, and over and over and over again, the comment was, I wish we can come back to school here, right? Because the Brimfield Heights has always been a, a school that honors students. But when you walk through the hallways, it's comfortable, it's inviting, and it's a place to be where students can learn and teachers can be successful to, to push for, learning forward. Rob?
Questions?
Thank you, uh, any questions? Kathy?
I just wanna say thanks to the CBOC, um, and to you, Rob, and for all the work that you're putting into this to come to this far along and to be this close to budget is pretty outstanding. So, thank you for your good work on that, and thank you to CBOC for, I've attended a couple of the meetings, and I can tell you that they put pen to paper and make sure that everything is going along the way it should, and, um, and that's, I think, the proper role. I was just thinking, Rob, if you could, in two seconds, just talk about, for those board members I haven't seen, the air conditioning that you put in at Brimfield Middle? Because it's resulted in a lot of energy savings, and it was pretty much state-of-the-art, or ahead of state-of-the-art even on it, and I remember seeing that, and it was pretty awesome, the chilling units that you have there. Um, and so, I'm, I'm glad, it's, like you said, it's nice to get a little bit of good news. Um, and so, I'm glad that it's working as well as it is there, and I look forward to getting more reports back. But thank you to all of you for coming and sharing with us.
I had the luxury of working with Chris in the two thousand and six bond. When Chris first took over, uh, Brimfield, and I was on the other side, uh, working for a general contractor at the time. So, we started a relationship way back when, and, uh, I remember all the DATs at the time about how hot the building was, and, and I was there to witness how warm those classrooms got. So, I think we're all very thankful for being able to put air conditioning in the majority of our buildings. Um, we put in a chilled beam, um, air conditioning system, which we do not have in the district. This is a new system for us, it's a four-pipe system, um, hot water and chilled water. It really runs over, uh, what I'll call a boiler system, um, that blows out, uh, forced air into the classroom. Um, all we've received so far is compliments throughout that entire school. Uh, we've done some initial surveys, uh, immediately after construction, and we have done some surveys since then, and it has been extremely positive. We usually try to get about eighty percent satisfaction, which seems low probably to everybody, but when you're talking about heating and cooling, that's awfully high. And I think we're well over ninety percent out there, so I would say we've been successful. Um, we added air conditioning and we're still saving energy, so, team has done well. So, thank you, Kathy.
Okay, um, other board member, questions? Donna?
I heard, yeah, I appreciate all the work, it's great. Um, to re, I wish I were, um, in the electrical contractor business right now. I think I could make some money, but, um, I heard you say that CBOC had voted or was pursuing getting the money for the cameras. And my question is, as probably many will be, is, um, can you do that? Isn't that money specifically dedicated at this point?
Yes, so, CBOC, uh, has the charge of taking action to add scope. Um, and we've taken, we've added scope throughout the entire bond, so yes, we do have a master plan. Um, anything over five hundred thousand dollars, we take to CBOC for action, and then they take vote. Now, if they're not comfortable with that decision, they've been, uh, charged with coming to the board and asking the board to provide direction. So, that has been, uh, past practice for us.
Kitty?
Yeah, I just wanna say that on Friday, I went to see Meadowlark as part of the superintendent tour, and I have not been in any of the new schools, you know, all the way in, and I was so impressed. It was just an outstanding job you all did, and it's a friendly space, it's a light space, it's an innovative space. So, just thanks for all of that, it's wonderful.
Great team on that one, yep.
Okay, anybody else? All right, then, uh, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item are action items. And I'll read them off. Eight point one, personnel items. Eight point two, approval of minutes, February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen. Eight point three, approval of minutes, February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, special meeting. Approval of minutes, February twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, regular meeting. Eight point five, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Centennial Middle School. Eight point six, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Monarch High School. Eight point seven, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Monarch K through eight school. Eight point eight, award of contract for furnishing fixtures and equipment FFNE at Fairview High School. Eight point nine, award of contract for furnishing fixtures and equipment FFNE at Monarch K through eight high school. Eight point ten, award of contract for furnishing fixtures and equipment FFNE at Nederland Middle Senior High School. Eight point eleven, award of roofing services contract for bond-funded improvements to Community Monory, sorry, school. Eight point twelve, cancellation of March twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, board meeting. Eight point thirteen, change order to the architectural design and engineering services contract for bond-funded improvement work at Fairview High School. Eight point fourteen, change order to the general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at the bus maintenance and transportation facility. Eight point fifteen, closeout to the concert, construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at Brimfield Heights Middle School. Eight point sixteen, closeout to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at Manhattan Middle School. Eight point seventeen, closeout to the construct, construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at the Southern Hills Middle School. Eight point eighteen, closeout to the general contractor contract for bond-funded work at Ryan Elementary School. Eight point nineteen, reduction in force timeline. Are there any items that the board members would like to pull? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to approve the items on consent. Um, Kathy, second by Kitty. Uh, any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
All right, Donna.
So, I have a question on eight point nineteen that I'm sure people would want ans, answered, and I didn't have the answer to. Um, here's my questions. What is the estimate of the probable number of licensed positions to be reduced for the next school year? What is the reduction in force, in workforce timeline and procedure?
Mike, can you help us with that question?
That is actually difficult to say because principals will be receiving their, their allocations, and once they receive their allocations, then they'll go through their staffing, and they'll see where the reductions occur. So, it'll be tough to know. Uh, we won't know that till after spring break. This is pretty typical protocol for districts to use in terms of, of resolution around RIFs and things of that sort. It, it will not go into the deep of the non-probationary teachers, it'll only go to the probationary. So, that, we can't give you that information now because we don't know exact number.
So, so do I understand in, in the document, it's written prior to March fifteenth, the school district to provide BVEA?
An estimate, yeah.
And so, that'll be by Thursday?
Oh, yeah, an estimate.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions or discussion?
Can I just add, Mike, before you sit down, that's not necessarily the actual reductions. We inform them of the number of probationary teachers, the number of potential reductions. But I wanna be really clear, by Thursday, he's not gonna be telling BVEA that we're gonna reduce fifty teachers. He might tell them that we have three hundred probationary teachers.
Correct, that's correct.
And the potential for reduction. I just wanna make sure we're saying the same thing, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt. Marquess. Myers. Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's move on to agenda setting. We have our agenda in front of us, and we heard something right at the beginning. A work session on, um, video cameras and security. So, it'd be nice if we could schedule that in. And there was another one, uh, Richard, you brought one up at the beginning, remember?
Well, there were a couple of them, one, one was to talk about that convening a working group.
Yes. And how would that be different than DTAC?
No idea.
Okay.
And I think before you decide to create another group, know that we have a group that works with, with Andrew Muntley, and it's staff and citizens. So, what I would encourage us to do is to set a time with Andrew so he can update you on the progress that's been made, because I'm a poor substitute, and so he can talk to you about the group that currently exists to see if that meets the needs. If it doesn't, we can certainly create another group. But we have an operating group around technology, so, uh, let, how about if we work, Andrew's at a conference, as soon as he gets back, we'll get it set and be able to talk about it.
Does that work with her?
That works for me.
I'd like, I'd like for us to look at suspension expulsion, particularly the suspension information that we, that I received. I, I, you, you all received the same information probably. And, and to kinda dig into that and see what's going on, okay?
So, we'll put that down as a topic?
Yeah.
Wait, no, Kathy was first.
I just have a question, when you have Andrew talk, can we get an update on what the, what's it called, DTAC? What its job is and what it does as part of the, so that...
I'm sorry, Kathy, an update on what?
DTAC, on the technology committee.
Yes, absolutely. They're, they're actually the committee I'm talking about, so, thank you, I forgot their name, thank you. But yes, um, we will get, we'll get a time, and Andrew can fill you in on who they are and what we're doing and what we know, and then you can decide if we need another group. what we're doing, and what we know, and then you can decide if we need another group. Donna?
Were we going to put open enrollment on there? Or did you already put it?
Do you want to do it as an RFI?
Maybe.
I mean, I could do it as an RFI to say, how did the swap go, and what's happening next? It might be that. I don't know if it's a discussion yet.
Okay.
You want to do that one?
Sure.
All right. Are you going to put in the RFI, or do you want me to do the RFI?
I can do it.
You can do it, okay. Shelley?
Yeah, so I think what Cindy's suggesting then is a work session on internet filtering and safety, that might then lead to a work group after we hear what DTAP is doing, and ask whatever questions we have of Andrew. So, I would, I would put that on agenda setting, that we have some sort of work session to discuss that. And also, I think that that's probably a topic of its own. I'm not sure that I would want to combine that with the whole philosophy on Chromebooks, and so, it feels to me like that's a separate work session on, on just our sort of technology on philosoph, or philosophy on technology, which I think I've suggested a few times, and even wrote a sample policy on. So, I think it's time to revisit that.
Do you want to start it with an RFI, or do you want to?
I don't think so. I think we need to sit down and talk about it.
Okay. Well, so this sounds like some of this will be part of the prioritization process?
Yes, agreed.
Okay. So, we're, so the work session would be one on internet filtering, and then a separate one would be on Chromebook use, more or less, or technology philosophy?
Right.
Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Tina?
Yes.
So, I get that?
So, this is all for prioritization, that we would not for, let's schedule a work session?
Okay, great, okay.
So, one work session would be on internet filtering, another work session would be on Chromebook use, and technology philosophy. I would say, within education, not the technology that we use to, for systems, or ERP systems and stuff, it's a different story. But within the educational setting. And then I would suggest that the work session on suspension expulsion is also part of the prioritization process.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, Shelley, when you talk about the internet safety, would we also include, because this came up during the superintendent questions, use of apps and how those are approved, and?
Certainly.
I think it's kind of somewhat related, so I thought we could roll it into that. I just didn't know if that fit, because you have a better understanding of that than I do.
That's part of the whole student data privacy thing, but there's no reason we can't talk about it as part of this, too.
Kitty? I'd like us to dive deeper into the harassment that's going on around LGBTQ students, and also, why students, for example, don't feel safe not being part of a group that walks out? Because I think there may be some implicit biases that people aren't aware of. So, I'd love to know, you know, specific, and I can do an RFI on this, what we're doing now, but then how do we make it better?
So, how would you feel about starting with an RFI?
Yeah.
And then we'll, so I'm not going to put it down in our prioritization.
Okay.
Start with the RFI, and then we'll decide whether we go through a prioritization on the next step, whatever that might be.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, wonderful. And then I had some clarifications on the agenda with the Summit Academy. So, it looks, so next Tuesday at six, the Summit Academy will present to the board in a work session style, which will be nice, that's kind of a Q and A, so that will be going through the application. What day was that, sorry? That is March twentieth, next Tuesday. And then, the, on the tenth, we have community feedback, so it sounds to me like this is part of the charter process, so it's a dedicated time for people to come and speak in support, or I guess not in support of Summit Academy.
By law, you have to do a public comment, so we've scheduled four-thirty to five for public comment on the charter application. And people can come pro, people can come con.
Okay, and then on four-ten, right after, is a work session at five on the Summit Academy proposal. So, I'm wondering what that is.
That's to review the application with you, so that you have deep knowledge of what the application is, and you'll have to vote, I believe it's April twenty-fourth. So, the tenth, then I'm going to look at my friends, is to do a thorough review of the application, and Leslie, what do you need to add?
On the tenth, both DAC and staff will present reports to the board, and so they'll have an opportunity to ask questions of staff, DAC, and the Summit Academy committee at the same time.
So, do you think that's work session, or should that be in the regular board meeting?
We scheduled it for a work session, so the board has an opportunity to ask questions, but.
And just, I'm wondering if it's, if it's public enough. Any opinions?
It certainly would be published, that that's what you're going to be doing.
No, I know it's published, yeah.
So.
Well, usually when DAC presents its budget priorities, we do it in the board meeting, not in a work session. So, I'm wondering if the recommendations from DAC and staff should be in a board meeting, or a work session?
We also.
Yeah, fine, either way.
On the twenty-fourth, we've scheduled, so the board will discuss the application in the meeting on the twenty-fourth. And also, we've scheduled the public, we're going to schedule two opportunities for public comment, one on the tenth before the meeting, and on the twenty-fourth during the meeting, so if that helps. It will be, the twenty-fourth will be during the board meeting.
Okay, so, because it looks like the only time we're in public in a regular board meeting is on the twenty-fourth.
I think that's correct, as the way it stands now.
Does that feel right to everyone? Yeah, okay, fine.
So, when does a decision have to be made on this?
April twenty-fourth.
That's the final date?
There would be one more regular meeting before that ninety-day deadline hits, so we're anticipating the board would take action on April twenty-fourth, but we do have one more meeting after that.
So, it'd be May eighth, May something?
First May meeting.
So, the first, so that's not a regular, so we would have to schedule an additional meeting?
It's a regular meeting.
Oh, that's a regular meeting, okay, got it.
So, what we're saying is, if at all possible, the vote on the twenty-fourth would be appropriate, but if you have to put it off, you could.
Okay. And just, if you're reviewing this, is anything missing, anyone that we, you felt we had committed to, that's not showing up on this agenda? One good? Okay. Any other items for prioritization? All right, great.
So, is there a work session on cameras then? Somebody suggested, I just didn't know if it made it to the list.
Well, the work session on cameras, well, that's a good question, because when, if they're saying the money's coming out of CIBOC, then it doesn't have to follow the budget prioritization process, is that right?
I don't know.
Well, no, I think, I think, I think if the money has shifted out of the general fund, to the, to the, the bond fund, it doesn't have the same timeline?
But we have a bigger discussion to have around the regulation, and making sure that we have the conversation around how it would be used, and what the regulations should look like. And so, I think we need to have that before CIBOC proceeds.
I think so, too.
So, I think the work session has to come before that, and CIBOC's not meeting until, oh, it's meeting pretty quickly, but.
What about April seventeenth? Could we put it there?
If it fits, I'm fine. I would really like to see the, the CIBOC policy, though, because I thought that CIBOC could recommend scope changes, but I'm not sure this is a scope change. So, what's the definition of a scope change? It sounds like a brand-new thing to me. So, it feels like it should go through the reg, regular budget prioritization process.
I looked up what we said originally for the bond projects, and it was covered in that, but it's something we could talk about at the work session.
Yeah, I'd just like to see the language and understand.
Yeah, I looked at it, but I'm, I understand that you want to see it.
Donna?
By it, were you saying it was covered? Cameras?
Yes, cameras are covered.
So, is that going on the seventeenth? I'm just double-checking.
If we can fit it, it looks like there might be time, we might stretch it a little bit, but I think we need to get it done.
On April seventeenth, we've got a, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen preliminary budget discussion at four-thirty. Then at five-thirty, you have the quarterly prioritization meeting.
Yeah, I think we can maybe do that in half an hour, and then go six to seven on the?
Prioritization in thirty minutes?
Yeah. You think so?
Yeah.
So, we can fit it in, or forty-five and forty-five?
Yeah.
We can get it.
Yeah. Yes, Richard.
Getting back to the cameras, I know that we're talking about the installation of the cameras, correct, in terms of CIBOC dollars. What about the maintenance, and the ongoing operations, and all of that? Where is that? How do we handle that?
I don't think that's a huge expense, but here's our expert coming to the front for us.
So, we, I want to note a couple of things. This regulation has to play with the cameras on the buses also. So, in the general fund, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Sutter, but we have money in there to add cameras in our buses. We're hoping to do that work this summer. I can't issue that RFP until the regulation is revised, so keep that in mind. If we wait until April, I don't see us meeting that deadline of getting those cameras in the buses. So, that's one piece. If we install cameras in all of our high schools, we were looking about an ongoing budget of about thirty thousand dollars. We wouldn't need that for a couple of years, because those cameras are under a two-year warranty. But after those two years, that's when we'd start incurring some dollars to update those cameras, et cetera, maintain.
Excellent.
We good? Shelley?
Yeah, I think earlier someone made this suggestion, that I rewrite this policy based on the best practices in video surveillance, and I would just like to hand that off to staff. I have been criticized too many times, and actually, much of the work that I do completely ignored, when I spent literally days and hours and weeks doing this sort of thing, and I just didn't have that, those best practices come from staff, so that we can all consider them in that way.
And we welcome that, Shelley. If you have a source you think we should look at, if you could send that to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I was just going to say, Shelley didn't mean to have you write it, just if you had specific concerns, so we could address them ahead of time, that's all. Because it isn't your job, it's staff's job, but if there's specific things that you were thinking of ahead of time, it'd be good to have those.
I'll send them a link to someone that has it.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, um, thank you all for jo, okay.
So, if we don't have a work session until April, we can't do cameras on buses this year, is that what you're saying, Rob? And I thought that was at least a priority, that we'd already decided.
Rob, could you come back, please?
So, I mean, one option is we could waive the policy just for the RFP for the buses in the interim, and put everything else on hold. Can't we waive policy?
Can you, can you do a quick process? Do we still need to do the RFP? Or, I thought we might have a vendor already?
Nope.
No, we don't?
The RFP is drafted, it's ready to go out on the street, but we need to, what I've done is I've told staff to put a hold on that until we revise the regulation. So, that's the next step for us, is revise the regulation, issue the RFP, enter into a contract, get the work done this summer.
Here's my understanding, you don't seem to have a controversy among yourselves over the cameras on the buses. I think the discussion item is the cameras in the buildings. The buses have been out there for quite a while. In fact, I do believe at one point, they were in the budget.
They are.
They are.
Yep.
They are in the budget. So, you've already seen the budget where the cameras are in there for buses. When I first arrived here, I got, I don't know how many emails about parents asking for video cameras on the buses, so that we could, you know, the bus drivers had a better way of identifying issues. I'm wondering what we could do, I need to look at my friend Laura, and see, is there a way that we, even if we don't quite have the policy done, that we could approve the cameras on the buses? Would we have to take a vote?
I mean, the other point I'd make is, this is a reg, that the regulation that's been brought to the board for information. It's not a policy that requires the study and the action. So, to the extent you want to let staff move forward, and then we can continue to revise it.
Could the board, could the board direct staff to put the cameras on the buses?
Shelley?
Melissa, what's the policy that governs this reg?
It's BG, oh, on this one.
Yeah. ECA, yeah.
BCA?
BCA.
Yeah, school security, it's ECA.
ECA. And does, is there a language that addresses this?
No, there's not.
No camera language?
We, I'd just point out, we already have cameras on some of our buses.
We have one camera on one bus. Yeah, yeah.
So, if you're a lucky child, you get that bus, okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to turn again to Melissa. Can they just direct us to proceed with the cameras on the buses?
Sure.
The board can direct us to do whatever you'd like us to do, that's right.
I mean, the issue is whether we're going to move forward with the regulation as proposed, or not. But the boards will, I think we, BG is the policy that talks about the information item, reviewing regulations, and then the board can decide that you want staff to address the regulation in some different way.
So, in this case, do we waive the current policy regulation, or would, do we sort of override it in this case? What's the best action?
Well, it's not addressing the policy at all, because the policy is so general.
Yeah, I just read it, yeah.
So, I think directing staff in terms of.
Could it, I know what we could do. Why couldn't you direct us to be, to ensure that cameras on buses is part of the budget? Then you can vote on it when we do the budget, and in the meantime, if we know it's going to be in the budget, Rob can get, get working on it.
There's, there's two steps here. One, we have to revise the reg, which that can, sounds like that could happen at a later date. What I need to know is, we'll go out for RFP, that contract will come in, it'll be over our signing authority, it'll have to come to the board for signature anyway. So, at that time, if you prove the contract, that'll give us approval to move forward.
Yeah. Contract would come to you, the budget would come to you, so what you would say to me is ensure that cameras on the buses is included in the nineteen, or eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen budget, whatever year we are.
The budget is, was in the, the dollars were in the revised budget, so that will not be coming back to you.
It's already been approved as a part of the seventeen, eighteen, budget.
Okay.
So.
So, do we have to do anything?
If it's in the eighteen, nineteen budget.
If you're okay with us moving forward, and we'll bring the contract to you, and meantime, we'll work on the reg, I think that's the guidance I need.
Board members, are you okay with proceeding like this, so that buses are in cameras?
Buses are in.
Cameras are in buses.
Now that we've completely confused you, we'll go get cameras.
So, I'm, I'm a little confused about the sequence here. So, this reg is supposed to cover cameras on buses, as well as indoor cameras. So, how does this work, then?
So, because it's just a reg, it's not the policy, we are going to let him go put the RFP out.
Okay.
And then, he's going to ask us to approve a contract for cameras in buses, and through that approval, it's going to be okay to do that.
And so, how does this regulation come to then cover those cameras on the buses? Retroactively, it covers them, because the language addresses cameras on buses.
Right. So.
I'm hopeful by the time that we have the RFP and a contractor on board, that we'll have a revised reg.
Okay.
So, if we can work together quickly, and we can, yeah, I think the timing will work out just fine.
Because the issue is really getting the RFP out and getting a contractor. And then, you can approve the, the regulation, once we get it drafted and rewritten.
But then we'll stay with the April seventeenth work session on cameras in buildings. And, and we can talk about buses as well. And with any luck, we'll resolve that as.
Yeah, okay. Yep, okay.
Thank you, expert.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming. I just want to clarify in the record that the Board of Education has issues to discuss in executive session as follows. CRS 2464024G, considering documents protected by Colorado Open Records Act specifically relating to letters of, or notes of references. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Kathy, seconded by Richard, and that's it. So we'll head over to the glacier. Thank you.
I need to take role.
And I, let's take role, too. Sorry.
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes, or here.
Garcia. Gebhardt. Marquess.
Yes.
Myers. Sergeant.
Do I need to say?
They need to say yes or no.
You each need to say yes or no. Benford. Yes or no? Fuqua. Garcia. Gebhardt. Marquess. Myers. Sergeant. Motion passes.